This conference will now be recorded.
Yep, I understand. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is 6:12 PM on September 25th, 2024. Roll call.
Mayor Joe Schein.
Here.
Sheila Gahl.
Here.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Randy is at home ill, and so he has to be excused.
Mike Parsons.
He also has to be... wrong way.
Wrong way.
Michael Ferguson.
Michael Ferguson has to be excused tonight. Uh, we have a quorum. Blood of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, mayor's report. Um, the annual Lewis County, uh, actually, it's called the Centralia landfill closure group. Um, they're having our annual meeting and it's on, um, I believe it's on a Monday or a Tuesday this year in November, and I was wondering if anyone on the council would be interested in attending that. The, uh, back in the day when they closed the landfill, um, all of the municipalities that were using it formed this group that would maintain, maintain it for safety and things like that, monitoring purposes. And they have an annual meeting where they approve the budget. And, um, they ask everyone to send a representative. So I was wondering if anyone on the council would be interested in going. And so I'll send out a email about that information. So.
When the date is and stuff.
It's November, it's, uh, November 5th is when it is in the afternoon in Chehalis. So, um, and so if someone could volunteer, that would be, that would be great. I'm unable to attend. Uh, next week on our, our next meeting on October 10th, excuse me, October 9th, um, Lewis County assessor Ross Nielsen is going to be here. He's going to give a, a presentation about the levy process and property taxes and how all that works. Um, and he'll be taking, um, questions from any of the public or council members that are here. Um, so, um, I, we'll put up some information about that to see if any of the, any of the local public would like to come to and, um, and interact with, with Ross and then get their questions answered. Um, there'll probably be about a 45-minute presentation he'll give. Um, it's, it's pretty good. I went to it last year and he gave it a little. So it's good timing because we'll be going into the budgeting season. And so we'll be talking about property taxes a lot. And then of course, the McMurphy concert, uh, this Saturday, um, on the 28th, gates open at 6, concerts at 7. This, all the profits from this will, well, everything raised will go towards, um, building a permanent stage down there. So, um, definitely get the word out and invite everybody you know to come and support it and have a good time. Um, everyone that's involved is a professional. We've got the, the tracks has done beer gardens before, Boss Hogs knows how to do barbecue and, and, and the, uh, the bands have done big professional shows before. So it should be an amazing show. Definitely invite people. Um, any council reports? No? Okay. Um, agenda approval. I don't have any modifications.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting for September 25th, 2024.
Motion, Mr. Parsons, to approve the agenda for September 25th as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Goff. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for September 11th, 2024.
We have a motion, Mr. Parsons, to approve the minutes from September 11th. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Goff. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Voucher approval.
Make, uh...
Oh, sorry. Behind, oh.
Make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the end of September 2024 at $10,535.17 for, for September 2024 of $59,121.63.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Goff. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, special reports. Um, Eagle Scout project introduction and proposal from Celestine Shai with Troop 324 in Woodlock. Absolutely.
All right. So hello, everyone. My name is Celestine Shai. I am a scout from Woodlock Troop 324. Um, I go to Toledo High School. I'm a running stretch student. I am a local resident here in Vader. And I am also the artist who designed the Vader Mayday button. I am here to talk about my Eagle Scout project proposal for a Vader historic mural. I'm planning on painting this on the alley side of the public workshop next to the voting ballot box. Now, my project concept is to develop a mural that depicts Vader's historic figures, landmarks, and stories. I'm planning on working with local artists that have experience in a process of creating murals similar to this. Using Vader's historic records, photos, books, and stories from local resources, I will be coming up with a design that will be approved by the city before finalizing any ideas and beginning with the painting. Uh, if there are any stories or photographs that anyone would like to share for the mural, then you can contact the mayor and, uh, he will be able to give those to me. Further details of any help that I may end up needing for this project will be brought up further after the approval, not only by the council, but also by the Eagle Board. And so to wrap this up, what I'm asking from the council is for the project approval and any help I may end up needing with site prep or work. If there are any questions, then feel free to ask me now or after.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
Big project.
And it's, I've been working on it for the last couple of months.
Oh.
A little longer than that. It's been an idea for the last one or two years now. Something I've been coming up for a while. I'm very passionate about it. And, uh, the local artists, they may be people that you guys know, Ron Gall and, uh, Mr. Morgan from Toledo. Will be helping me come up with the design.
These are gentlemen that have done big murals before. You know, the Toledo mural there next to the grocery store. That was done by Mr. Morgan and his son for Eagle Project back in the 90s. Um, and then...
Really?
And then, uh, Mr. Gall has, uh, experience doing, um, some of the large format painting in Toledo.
Just recently, we got done painting a trailer. I'm a part of the Toledo Lions Club, which is a club, uh, in, on the high school that goes out and helps the Toledo Lions Club with different things. Over the summer, we painted a trailer for the firework, one of the fireworks stands. And I was the person who was on the back painting, coming up with the idea, sketching it and painting the Lions symbol on the back of it.
That's cool. What's, what's the first? To me, as soon as she was talking, I had a picture in my head of a picture that I've seen, might be a little cringey, but what's the first thing that comes in your, your heads? That would be on the meal.
Yeah, Oprah's having the idea.
Looking at me. Where are you guys? I mean... Wrong answer. I don't know, the brick factory? The brick factory? What do you think of? I think of the guys fishing in the pot, in the... Oh. The council lake. Fishing in the, uh, the, uh, pothole. Let's not make fun of the council. In the mural. First thing that popped in my head, guys fishing in the pot.
That would be funny.
Anyway, I like the idea. Do we need a motion, uh, to approve it, or do we just say yea? I think you probably just need a yea right now, right?
Yeah, right now, just a yea. I'll come up with it.
People are receptive to the idea that you can start working on an actual design.
Yeah, and then once the design is finalized, I'll, uh, bring my ideas to council and let you guys see them, uh, see what you like, what you don't like. I can change it up and come up with a final plan.
So I'm a yea.
I'm a yea.
Jason, are you a, a, a yea on, on this mural idea?
I heard him shake his head.
Am I on the what?
Are you, uh, are you in the yea club? Are you, uh, in support of, uh, this, uh, painting a mural?
Project?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. But it's everyone.
Also, thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be here at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Her idea, not mine. So, you know.
Your kids are...
All right, uh, moving on to public comment. Any members of the public have any comment tonight?
Yeah, I do. Okay, I apologize that you guys didn't get to the games. Okay? Um, but this is the application. Um, we are having a Halloween event where the Lions Club is going to partner with Marlena at the Merchant. Um, and we are asking for permission to shut down B Street and permission to use barricades and garbage cans for the event. Um...
This is... Feel like how they do May Day? So this is a Halloween, uh, Halloween event?
Yeah.
On...
On October the 26th.
So this is the Saturday before Halloween?
Yes.
Truck retreat games, fun. See garbage cans, barricades. So, um... I was looking forward to a Halloween party this year, but I'm going to be gone that time. Cause I'm shaving everything and I found a light bulb in my mouth that turns on. The Uncle Fester. Should we approve this now, or should we just only have it for October 5th?
Yeah, then for next.
Okay.
The next council meeting. That way everybody has time to review it and, um, see.
Okay.
Probably most definitely I'll get it through.
Yeah.
But...
Okay, super.
Okay, so I just want... We have to wait now to advertise until the next meeting for it to get approved, correct?
Well, the next meeting is on the 9th. So... I guess yes, because it's not for the real...
You mean daily?
Yes, Jason, I can hear you. It'll be approved, right?
Yes.
I mean, yeah.
I mean, we're, we're now, and I don't know. I don't, I don't have, I guess my specialty isn't whether or not you can or can, but I think for everybody to be able to review the package, then we would need to put it on the next one.
Advertise.
Okay.
All right, cool. Exciting. Yeah, I remember last year, um, it was, I think, I don't think the street was closed last year, but, uh, um, the event happened and it was a lot of fun. It was, it was a really fun ride.
I think we did shut.
Did we?
She did. She did the exact same, it's the exact same thing. It's just...
I remember everyone pulling in in front of the, like, parking right in front of me while I was dressed up like the mad scientist.
She let some people come in, um, like her vendors, um, because they were like selling stuff, but she did have it shut there.
All right, so this precedent for it, we did it last year, was successful, so. Great.
Thanks, guys.
Yep. Dropping this application off.
See you guys later.
Any other public comment tonight?
Yeah, Joe, uh, I have a question about the comprehensive plan. The planning and zoning was supposed to be working on that. I see they canceled meetings. I was just wondering what was that? Thanks.
Bob, Bob, I'm sorry, what, um, what were you wondering about the comprehensive plan?
That they canceled.
Where is it at?
Couple meetings.
There's been no planning and zoning meetings. Um, you've canceled them and they were supposed to, with Christina, go through the comprehensive plan to have it ready by the end of the year. So I was just wondering what happened.
Oh, um, so for timing, I think they have until the end of next year to get a complete, it's not, it's not this year. Um, and then Christina actually left, um, SCJ Alliance, and so we have a, a new, um, planner with SCJ, and so she's getting caught up with everything. Um, and that happened the week before the planning committee meeting, um, which is why the new planner wasn't prepared to, um, present other comprehensive plan information. So, um, but there's, there's plenty of time. Um, behind the scenes, um, the, uh, infrastructure folks at SCJ are, um, sending us questions about, um, city infrastructure, old projects that we've done, how much they cost, where that money came from. Um, all kinds of information that needs to go into a comprehensive plan. Um, and so there is still work being done on it. Um, but I expect a, a planning committee meeting to be happening, um, next month in October. So should be information. Yep. Any other public comment? Okay, um, heard something, tick, tick. That's Jason. Okay, um, item one of city business, council to consider resolution 11, 2024, recognizing public power week, October 6th through 12th, 2024. Um, so the PUD got ahold of us. They sent us this resolution and they were, um, wondering if the city would officially recognize that, um, public power is an important thing. Versus, I guess, private power companies. How does the council feel about this resolution? More of a, you know, how these are, there's a... It's a gesture.
Public Power Week, October 6th through 12th. I make a motion that we approve resolution 11, 2024, recognizing public power week.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution 11, 2024, recognizing public power week. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Goff. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Shall I read the resolution? I guess I shall. Whereas we, the citizens of Lewis County, place high value on local control over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, locally-controlled, not-for-profit electric utility, and as consumers and owners of our electric utility have a direct say in utility operations and policies. And whereas public utility district number one of Lewis County provides our homes, businesses, farms, social services, and local government agencies with safe, reliable, efficient, and cost-effective electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. And whereas the district is a valuable community asset that contributes substantially to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas the district has also taken on additional stewardship for our community's information infrastructure through continuing efforts to expand broadband networks and telecommunications services, ultimately expanding communication, community and economic development opportunities. And whereas the district is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place in which to live and work, as well as contributes to protecting the global environment. Now therefore be it resolved, the district will continue to serve the community with safe, reliable, and affordable electricity for current and future generations, just as it, just as it has since 1936, the year when the utility was created to serve all the citizens of Lewis County, with the exception of the city of Centralia. And be it further resolved that the week of October 6th through 12th, 2024, be designated public power week in order to honor the district for its contributions to the community and to make its consumers, consumer owners, policymakers, and employees more aware of its contributions to their well-being and how it makes their lives powerful. And be it further resolved that our community joins hands with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in the celebration of public power recognition that the district is good for consumers, consumers, businesses, the community, and the nation. That's from Vader City Council, 25th day of September, 2024. Nice pun in there. I like it. Makes the people powerful. I thought it had a little bit of a stick at Centralia for having their own Centralia power in life. Well, there is that too. Except for Centralia. All right, uh, moving on to number two, council to consider work water for additional stormwater and street repairs. Darren, take it away. Just say next slide or something, you know?
Okay.
Next slide.
So we wrapped up round one of, uh, Public Works project, which included some culvert repairs in the stormwater system. Next. So, uh, with the stormwater restoration, we did 7,166 feet of the city stormwater ditches have been cleaned. Free of debris now. We're hoping for good water flow. Next. Uh, culvert replacements. We replaced eight failed culverts and added one new one, flowing about 280 feet in culvert. Uh, I just wanted to show you guys some pictures. This is, uh, 100 block of B Street. This was a failed culvert. Went ahead and replaced it. Uh, C Street, alleyway, right here at eight, across from the intersection, culvert was crushed. It was replaced. So C Street again. Um, new culvert in the 500 block of B Street. These residents didn't have anywhere to park. They were parking in the right way. This was the one we added to give them an area to park. B Street alleyway, culvert was crushed as well. We replaced that one. This is on 7th over by Little Crane. The culvert over there was also damaged, so we ended up putting in a new culvert. And we trenched the ditch from the parking lot of Little Crane to the culvert, hoping to keep water out of the parking lot and off the highway over there. Uh, D Street, this is, uh, before what we had there. We had a lot of erosion on the road bank, uh, water line showing. We got the next one.
Did, uh, county come in and take care of the water line, or did you just?
We took care of it. We, I talked to Dan and got approval for what we needed to do.
Good, good. Keep working with them.
So we came in, we covered the water line with inch and a quarter rock, laid our culvert over the top. Uh, it actually got covered up with inch and a quarter all the way to the top. And this is the completion of it. This is A Street. Uh, we had multiple problems on the A Street. It was also eroding the road there. Uh, cable company actually ran their trencher through the culvert. That cable line that's there was actually laying down inside the culvert with a bunch of rock and dirt. And then this culvert was kind of interesting. There was about 12 feet of metal culvert. That picture on the left there, that is the culvert butted up against a six-foot piece of concrete. We had a large gap and it was filling with debris. We replaced it with two 18-inch culverts. Also brought in some field dirt that we had down at the sewer plant, so we were able to widen the area, reditch the water flow so it flowed better. See how much wider it is through there. And that's the final product. The nice street. So while we're out doing this, we've come across some other things. This is the culvert at the intersection of B and 6. The entire bottom is gone. Go to the next picture, Joe. Um, might be hard to see, but this dark area right here is a large hole that's being created because the water's not properly running through the culvert. Not sure where that water's going, but it's starting to undermine the roadbed. So we're going to recommend replacing that one as soon as possible. And then, uh, C Street. We would like to expand C Street from where it ends to the highway 506. Um, when you drive down C Street now, there's not a lot of room. Big concern is emergency access for emergency vehicles. There's nowhere to turn around down there, so there was a structural fire or something. They're not gonna have very good access.
So is that gonna be widened and pushed through? Cause it looks like it's one lane.
Yeah, it's one lane.
Or is it just gonna be a one-way?
Well, right now, the road itself that's in there is 12 feet. Plan on going to 16. All the way through. Should be able to pass two vehicles in there. Uh, this area also gets a lot of water. So we've got a plan for the water as well. Next one.
Spoiler.
Spoiler. Um, yeah, as you can see, this is the end of the road, the driveway with the back of a truck, but there's nowhere to turn around. And from the end of this road to highway 506, it's only 150 feet that's not connected. I think it'll just make traffic flow a lot easier. So our plan is for storm, get a lot of water that comes between the two or the three houses and that seagull head hole on there. Plan is to put in a couple catch basins. John did find a line through there. It's clogged. So the plan is, is to do some digging and find the line, cut it, jet it at the catch basins. Uh, gonna have to talk to a property owner and see about maybe going through their property with the storm to, the blue line there would be a new ditch all along C Street. And then the storm would run to that ditch and run over to 6.
Historically, this area has been a big issue for all the homeowners with water. I mean, ever since I've been involved, people have talked about it. Uh, these folks here have ditching under their house. It actually runs out of their house into the alley ditch here to evacuate the water from underneath their house. You can see here, um, Ken's doing the same thing. He's got pumps under there and he's got this ditch that runs through here. You can actually see it, which I'm sure doesn't help with this here.
And this is another ditch here. These people have actually dug the road out there to get the water to go across the road.
So there's all kinds of issues with water in here, and so the... So there's all kinds of issues with water in here, and so the idea is by capturing it here. Sending it to a new ditch that doesn't exist right now. The ditch will be, you know, fairly deep, and so it'll lower the water level in that whole area. And then, um, it'll evacuate it out here to a stormwater line out at the, out at the road.
That already exists.
That already exists, it's plugged in. So it could help a lot of residents with water issues. And we've already talked with, uh, these folks here, they're the most. Local in the neighborhood, I would say, and they're absolutely in support of this idea. Next.
Yeah, there you go, thanks. Uh, nine, or two hundred block and Ninth Street, we've got an exposed sewer line. There's a good chance it can be damaged if we leave it exposed. So the plan there is just to go in and clean that ditch up a little bit, better. Backfill it with Corey's falls and we'll cover the pipe up with inch and a quarter and that ditch is deep enough and has enough flow that. Raising it up a little bit on that one end isn't gonna hurt it. And then City Hall, so the storm ditch right here behind City Hall that comes along the fire station. Runs to the edge of, runs to the right of way here and then just disperses onto everybody's properties. And in the winter time, it floods a lot, they get a lot of standing water back here. So the plan is, is to put in a covert and capture the water at the ditch here where it ends. Cut it across the back here and run it up the right of way with a new ditch. Well, cold, it'll just be a forty-six foot of covert. To a new ditch that'll run along the right of way to the ditch out here on the eighth. While doing so, we've talked about adding parking back here. Punching the road through along the city hall here and having some parking spaces back here, that's where we're gonna have the ground dug up. Won't take a lot of rock to do, pretty inexpensive for this project. And it'll free up parking out front.
Want a tour?
Little trip, never been out there.
I know, and I looked out today, I've never been out there.
Um, there's room for three to four vehicles back there. Uh, this is showing the end of the ditch. There and how it just kind of runs off on the, four parcels here it runs off on to. And then along the right of way here is where we put the new ditch. Kind of an overview, uh, the blue line would be the covert, the red area would be the parking. And then the green running up to eighth there would be the new ditch line. Does that, access go through there? Alongside the fire station? Yeah. Goes through there as well. And it's two vehicles wide.
Okay. So this, this again has been an issue ever since I've been involved. The amount of water that, pretty much this whole side of town. Ends up coming from this direction on the, in the ditch here or this direction here. And they all come down and then they funnel under this covert right here, you can see it's patched right here. Um, four years ago, we had the county put a new covert in because it, there was so much water that it was backing up into these folks' yards. And so it's a creek's worth of water on its own that runs exposed in this deep ditch right here. And then it turns and then it kind of just, like Darren said, goes everywhere. And so there's lakes in here. There's lakes, this whole area here, uh, Shelley Bieber lives right here and she calls this the Everglades. In the, uh, in the winter time, because the amount of, um, standing water back there. And it just kind of eventually makes its way to the ditch that runs along here. Um, and then this ditch crosses under A Street and then goes out to a Ninth Street ditch here. And so, um, she has done all kinds of work herself to try to mitigate this, even though it's not her stormwater, but it's just all on her property. Um, the folks in the new manufactured home here, they've been, the previous owners have tried to do work there and they did kind of a. Shoddy job trying to take care of it, and so the idea is that the city should finally. Take ownership of this, we'll keep the stormwater on our own property. Instead of going across other people's properties and just running it down this right of way. To a ditch and then it'll flow down. And then out, and then hopefully solve these, eliminate problems that these people are having.
Questions, questions.
That's a great slideshow Darren.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Goff.
Are you gonna be able to access, uh, B Street from that parking area next to the fire department?
The gravel would tie in there.
Yeah, so the, so our, our gravel behind City Hall would be in conjunction with the fire departments and so. Yeah, so this will be the parking behind City Hall, so the cars could actually drive right here or. And if there was nothing here, they could just pull out right through here.
Got another one. How about the Department of Transportation and, uh, pushing C Street through?
Yeah, so we've talked to, um, the state about. Our roads that connect with the highway, um, you know, part of one of, up on, uh, up near I Street. You know, where the development, where they wanted to put the development in up there. And we contacted them about what their role is when it comes to access within the city limits. And they told us, yeah, whatever you want to do, if you guys approve it, then we're good with it. Um, they really didn't have a lot to say, so if we want to connect C to the highway, um. They're not, they don't have a problem with it. So I, I found that to be an interesting. Fact that the state wouldn't want to have a lot of say, but within the city limits, they don't. At least not in Vator.
Joe, there was one more that did not get put on the slideshow. And that is the electrical, the power supply at the pocket park, Seventh. We got a estimate from an electrician. So for, if John and I put the conduit in, uh, the electrician's wrote up a quote where he can. Provide the wire in the pedestal. And all we have to do is put in the conduit. And in the quote, he also added a weather, or sorry, a light outside for the flag pole. Light up the flag and he could add a, um. Weather outlet there, so we'd have an extra place to hook up power there as well. So the power line would run from the shop here, out here behind the flag pole to an RV style pedestal. And then they'd run the line over here, put a light in, turn it on the bike and put in another. I don't know, outlet there with four hookups.
So long-term, long-term idea for this property is to have the ability of hosting. On small events on it and having electricity out there would help if there was food vendors or if the Lions Club was doing something or. You know, just all kinds of things, so the idea is to get electricity to that side of the park or that side of the property. And then, um, being able to have that available to.
Be utilized for your Christmas tree.
And yeah, if we're, if we're gonna have Christmas decorations out there, last year, um. The Handcrafted Merchant was good enough to allow us to run an extension cord from there, from there to, uh. How are our Christmas decorations that we had out there on the property? But, you know, that's not a long-term solution, so the city should have its own power on the property. So is that included in, in this? Part of that price?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, that's part of those, the bid from the electrician is part of the total price of that twenty-four dash eleven.
You guys burying the conduit yourselves to save money? You guys do the project?
Yes, we'd be doing the conduit ourselves.
Probably on a very two conduits to the pedestal and then back.
Is there water over there?
No.
No? Is there water at the?
The shop. Maybe, sorry.
So I like your idea, that was Bob, right, who said that? You know, the two conduits, I like the idea of we, and also putting water. Over there from the shop, you can use the same trench. Yeah, because they can be in the same trench. Yeah. And then we would have shut offs at the shop, right? So that we don't have. We're going right to the power panel in the shop. Okay, and then those breakers would be kept off unless we needed them. Yep.
There's, there's the work order for the electrical and then there's, there's one that says. The emergency street repairs, August, September.
Probably in my packet for what the cost of what's already done. That, you got a vision for now?
There's, yeah, I'm, I'm lost.
Which one are you looking for, the electrical one?
Well, I'm looking for what.
Before, there should have been a packet, but this one has previously been done.
Yeah. There it is. It's, it's okay. I shouldn't flip through far enough. See that, just as I'm prepared. So there's, so what do we got here, let's see. Oh, I see, so you've got a variety of work orders.
Yeah, there's a variety, they're all individually numbered and then I went over them and just cut you out.
So that's why you shouldn't tear your packet apart.
Didn't tear it apart.
It's all open place.
Yes, renting another excavator and a dump truck again.
I was trying to see the total.
There's gonna be two total sheets, there's gonna be a total sheet for what has already been done. And there's gonna be a total sheet that says work order cost.
This one, that's the last one, found it. Alright, so this one, this first one, this was the estimate. So we estimated that the cost was nineteen thousand?
No, we had estimated. So we had estimated that this, all of these projects that we have done, have completed was going to be thirteen thousand. Thirty-six dollars. And then you have, what I have calculated, what we've spent on that is nineteen thousand dollars and thirty-five. Nineteen thousand thirty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. So. Then you have the packets for the new work orders and then that is his estimate for the new work orders.
So the twenty-three eighty-eighty-eight?
Yes.
Yeah, I just added twenty percent on there just in case.
And I will note on this, yeah. On this one too, there's additional costs, like on the first one, there's Darren's page. That, um, we included.
I did put two on that.
Thank you.
I went half of what we did last time. Or a little over half, actually.
Yeah.
So. The council could approve the entire amount or individual projects.
So is this still of the?
This would have to be out of the re.
Yeah, the re, the refunds, um, it's for capital improvements, repair repairs.
Okay, and we still have that in there?
Yeah, we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in there. Twenty, hundred and thirty?
But past minute, hundred and twenty, so it should be in your.
Yes, Jason.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, extra projects for the city water sewer project.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve. The, all of the projects, it sounds like.
Yes, the entire, the entire thing.
For the second, second of Miss Goff, any discussion? I will say that, um, by the city owning this, um, it is. Astounding how much less we are spending on the work than if we were to hire a contractor to do it.
Oh, yeah.
And it looks good.
Alright, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving on to item number three on city business, council to consider Friends of Little Falls request. To use the city barricades for the benefit concert.
I made a motion to approve the Friends of Little Falls to use the barricades.
The motion, Mr. Parsons, to approve the request by Friends of Little Falls, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second of a Miss Goff, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries. Council to discuss citizen complaint of trespassers vandalizing property bordering, bordering McMurphy Park. Signage deterring activity to be posted. So at the park board meeting, um, one of the neighbors of McMurphy, these are folks that live on the Ananen roadside. Um, they have property that borders the park, obviously. Um, folks are in the park and then they're crossing at the falls, so when the water is low in the summertime. Um, there's a natural. A natural bridge across the falls to get over there. I think they'd probably cross anyway if that wasn't there. Um, but they're crossing onto the other property and they're having campfires, they're. Relieving themselves, um. Taking, they've had, the neighbors have chairs down there for their own enjoyment and people on the park side have taken their chairs. Um, and so they're, they're really, really frustrated with it, they have contacted the stairs department. Uh, they do have cameras down there on their side now and they're trying to identify people, um, that are, um. Trespassing and, and doing other bad things down there, so. Um, they've also had face-to-face confrontations with the people, try to educate them that, um. That, that side is their property, it is not the parks. Not the parks, is not public access. Um, so the Olakwa Creek is, is, um, considered a non-navigable stream. Which means property owners basically own to the center of the creek. Um, so there is no public access, you can't walk up and down the. If, if you can't walk up and down the creek unless it's a public park like us, you can't. You know, they, they own the land under the creek, that being said, you can floats, but of course no one's floating, floating across the land bridge because.
It's a land bridge?
It's a land bridge, so anyway, um, so what they're asking at the least is that we can get some signage down there to educate people. You may remember, I don't know if it actually came this far, but park board has had other member, other neighbors down there too. Um, on the south side. Um, on the south side, um, complained about people crossing through the trees into their fields. And so we have, we have signs down there now to educate people that that park boundary is there. And so, um, I think in your packet, there were a couple of proposals for signs. Yeah, so, um, the private property sign, um, we could put those up as if, if someone was waiting in the creek, um, when you leave on the north and the south side, have those there to tell people that that's the park boundary and that is private property beyond that. Um, and then also near the Little Falls itself, um, have this one that's not quite so, um, unsightly, um, but certainly it would, uh, tell, educate the people that the, um, the creek is the park boundary and that, um, there's no access allowed on the other side. So, um, you know, we, the park board kind of discussed different options as to what we can do um, to help the neighbors out. You know, and obviously no one wants to fence anything because, you know, the park is beautiful. The creek is beautiful and no one wants to have unsightly fences on either side. Um, and so if, if you're not going to go a, uh, permanent barrier route, um, signage is really our best bet. Um, the neighbors down there have put signs on their own side of the property and they have been vandalized. Um, so we may run into that problem as well, but, um, we should try to do something. Long-term, I think the city could probably get cameras down there as well, um, once internet's available and we can, um, have some type of permanent record of who is crossing the creek. And then if the neighbors have issues, we can cross-reference their footage with our footage and try to get some license plate numbers for them, but, um.
Hey Joe, is there any way that we, is there any way that we could get signage that would, um, deter people for damaging the signs? Because it's a, a city sign that it, I don't know.
So you want a sign that says, don't touch the sign?
Yeah, a sign that says, if you tamper with the sign, you get double fine.
I think I've seen jokes about that before, but I get what you're saying. Yeah, the sign that, that the sign is, uh, the city property and it's a knock.
Kristen did mention that, was speaking with the sheriff, when Jen was speaking with the sheriff, that because we don't have signage, like they can't do anything on, you know, on our side because we don't have the signage. And since they're taking their signage, they can't do anything. There's no way for them to, you know, do a trespassing.
Mr. Rubin, do you have something to add?
That's just what Jen was saying. And I might be saying it wrong, so don't fuck me. I'm not going to put it in a minute.
If you have some suggestion.
Trespassing, signs that, trespassing. If there's someone that shows up on the property, it's not there or they're not wanted. They should call and then have to come out and contact.
So whole no signs.
It would just be like, let's say, you had this property, maybe your property might have a mine. And if you're on your property, start coming on my property, it's still trespassing on my property. Just because the city doesn't change the fact that.
So I could, I could, yes, but yeah, completely. I just was told that it was a possibility of this, no signage there.
As far as if the signage was in the park stating this is where it is. I mean, people would be out there in the parking, they might be crossing the rivers thinking that they're still within the boundaries of the park and not knowing that they're on someone else's property. I can see that.
So at this point, you know, it seems at least our responsibility to educate people where the park boundary is. Uh, not everyone is familiar that, that, that it's, that is the creek. It seems probably pretty obvious, but then again, what's obvious to you and me is not necessarily obvious to everybody else. So, um, you know, the, the request is to, for the council to authorize the purchase of these signs. They're about eighty bucks a piece and there's four of them.
I make a motion that we get the signs.
The motion for Mr. Parsons to order the signs. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second of a Miss Goff, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll get those right away and get them put up.
Can the city get the paintball thing for the name?
The paintball thing?
Put it on the name of the property?
I make a motion. Get that catalog and look it up.
I think, I think you should realize that they were selling that to populations in Africa. And so we might want to look at local laws. See if we can shoot people anonymously.
Legally?
Um, with paintballs. Uh, that's the end of, end of city business. Any elected official comments? I do have one.
Possibly two.
Two, there were two, weren't there? The Lemay thing, right?
Lemay, yes.
Um, I should have done this earlier, but I forgot. Uh, first, um, uh, our solid waste provider sent us a, a letter, um, which was good news, actually. Um, this is what they said. Uh, as stated in the previous letter, Lewis County Solid Waste Disposal District and Board of Lewis County Commissioners approved the disposal fee increase of twenty dollars per ton at both Lewis County Transfer Station at the beginning of July, July first. Uh, this should have shown an increased amount of sixteen dollars per ton at both transfer stations. Unfortunately, this fee included taxes already and was not identified when the rates were approved by the UTC. These rates have been corrected now and the credits are being issued to all customers within the next billing cycles. So everyone's going to see a credit on their, on their garbage bill, um, for an overcharge, so.
I like your credit.
Good, good news from, from Lemay. Bad news it's overcharged, but good news we'll get it back. Um, and then the second, yeah, the second news, um, some of you may know, um, the Lewis County employee, uh, Dan Anderson, that runs our water system here in town. Um, his wife, um, was unfortunately, um, killed in a motorcycle accident, um, two days ago.
Oh, that one.
And, um, and so, um, you know, their family is going through, um, some hard times right now. Um, they've just adopted some small children and things like that. So, um, one of the things city hall has, Lisa and Kristen in particular have, uh, been discussing is putting together a, um, a meal.
Meal train.
Kind of a meal train service, um, so where people can, can cook some home-cooked meals and we can get them over there so that the family doesn't have to worry about that. So, um, Lisa, what were your thoughts on that?
Um, when Kristen and I were talking, I think our thoughts were just kind of get it out to the community that we're going to do a meal chain here at city hall. People can bring, um, the meals here and Kristen and I off, um, down city time, but we'll go drive the meals over to them. Or, you know, we have council members who want to, you know, drop them off or, I mean, anybody who wants to, you know, volunteer to go take them over there is more than welcome to where Kristen and I can do it. But just to have them, we have enough room to have them brought in here and try to help the family out as best we can.
So Dan is, he's not a city employee, but he's part of the Vader family. He's done a lot of really good work for the city. He's very passionate, um, about, about, um, our utility. And so, um, it'd be, uh, the least we can do to, to help him and his family out, um, in their time of need. So, um, so we'll get some more information put out there about that.
The meal chain, I believe, is, it's a free program. You can set it up and just, like I said, it can get, just get shot out to the whole community. Just know that this could be a, um, I don't know what it's called, but just an access place for them to drop it off to make sure that it gets to them. But I just wanted to get the, you know, you guys' approval that we can use the facility for that.
All right. Any other elected official comments tonight? Okay, meeting's adjourned at seven ten PM.